Good evening and welcome to the February 22nd meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board, a date in history that will never happen again. Because if you go by the numbers, it's two, 22, 22. It won't happen again till three, 3, 33, I guess. Pretty good. At this time, we're going to ask you to stand. We have seven different people, youngsters, to lead us in our pledge tonight. Jack Peak, 4th grade student at Black Fox. Jacob Bowles, a 3rd grade student at Black Fox. August Golden, a 5th grade student at Mitchell Nielsen. Elias Espazo, a 4th grade student at Mitchell Nielsen. Calvin and Riker Scruggs, both 1st grade students and twins at Mitchell Nielsen Primary.
They all had people.
And also Jack David Wilson, a 1st grade student at John Pitters. So at this time, I'll ask you to please stand, remove your hats, and we'll have our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with thirteenth and justus Christ.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, board members, you have previously received a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications, Ms. Trail?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy Tuesday. I want to say Tuesday again because I see a few of our staff members maybe in tutus. There's been twinning today, there's been tennis shoes today. It's actually been quite exciting to be in the schools today. What a fun day to celebrate. So, but, my part of communications, we would like to thank First Community Mortgage for the donation of coats. Also like to thank Friends of Lineball Library for their donation of books to Bob the Book Bus. Also, Irma Siegel would like to thank the Guitar Center Music Foundation for awarding Mark Hale a $2,500 grant to purchase instruments. Very excited about that. Mr. Hale's classroom is just getting full of instruments through grants, honestly. So that's nice. The Board is also invited to join us for STEAM in the City. It's on March 10th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. STEAM in the City is the first time that our STEM-designated schools, as well as those in process of getting their STEM designation, are coming together to show the public what STEM looks like in our schools. So please join us if you can. If you'd like to be a judge, let me know, because we are looking for some judges, and some STEM partners. So we're really excited to bring not only our community partners, but our schools together. This will be at the Lane Agri Park. And again, that's March 10th from 5:00 to 7:00. February 15th, we didn't have a board meeting, but I just wanted to go ahead and give a wonderful shout-out to our school resource officers. It was their day of celebration. So again, it was February 15th, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to say it in front of the school board how much we do appreciate our school resource officers, and I know you've joined me in that sentiment. MCS, as well as students throughout Middle Tennessee, participated in Invention Convention on February 17th, even with the storms. We had several winners, and I know we'll have them at another board meeting a little bit later on, but I do want to go ahead and read out their names right now. So winners included Ariana Killings, Chloe Graves, Chloe White, Hayden Thornall, Bridgette Millsaps, Mallory Bush, Javion Miles, Jordan Freeson, Lennon Kirby, Abby Dell, Perla Sanchi, London Williams, Leila Goblet, Omar Mohammed, and Ashton Taylor. And these came from several of our schools. Irma Siegel, let me look at my cheat sheet real quick here. Let's see, Salem, Irma Siegel, Bradley, Mitchell Nielsen. Yeah, so that's where they came from. But we're really proud of the successes that they had. And again, we will have them back at another board meeting. The art show is also happening. It will begin, be put up on February 28th. It'll be out here in the rotunda again, and it will stay up from March 1st through April 28th. We will also have an art show at the Frist again, so we're really excited to be back at the Frist this year. And that student artwork will be displayed from March 19th through April 2nd. So if you would like to see the beautiful work that our students and our art teachers put together, we invite you and the public to be looking, viewing it out here in the rotunda, or when you're at the Frist, to really enjoy that exhibit. We're very proud of that. Just one last reminder, Bradley and Patterson Park are hosting Moments in African-American History. That'll be this Thursday. We did have to postpone that from January. So it's this Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 at Patterson Park. So those are my announcements, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. A lot of wonderful things going on among students and teachers. Spotlight on Education. Dr. Duke?
I think so.
I'm sorry, excuse me. When?
Ms. Trail?
Yes.
I want to give you a high-five and a heads-up, I mean a...
I don't know why, but I'll take it.
Your selection is to join the National Superintendent's Conference and to be invited to write and summarize some of the conference activities.
I did. I got outside my box last week. I was a reporter for the...
All across the nation, they recognize Ms. Trail and invite her to the...
Very good.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You had an opportunity then to make those people say what you wanted them to say.
I did not write their quotes for them, like I've been known to do around here, so it was fun. And I did get to attend the conference as well, and it was a tremendous conference. So thank you, Mr. Ballard. And you know what to do here.
I'm filling in for Mr. Marlin on the Spotlight on Education tonight, so I'm going to come down here so I can start the video. But I'll echo the congratulations to Ms. Trail for being selected from that national organization to come. Just again, shows the caliber of employees we have here in Murfreesboro City. So our Spotlight on Education tonight is our school counselors. Earlier this month, we celebrated National School Counselor Week, and we wanted to take a moment to recognize their work as part of our Spotlight on Education. We have 19 school counselors, all of which who are critical members of the MCS team, and they help ensure we are meeting our goals of providing whole-child supports to every student in our district. In addition to meeting with students in small groups and individually, they are instrumental in working with our parents to help problem-solve issues that may be barriers to their child's education. They work hand-in-hand with our teachers and administrators to ensure we are proactively creating school climates that promote learning. And additionally, they serve as the hub or connector for all of our service providers, such as our social workers, our behavioral interventionists, our mental health providers, and DCS. Their work is also one of the main reasons we continually have our schools recognized as, through Vanderbilt's multi-tiered System of Supports program, as schools of recognition. And so as we spotlight them this week, we do want to have a very brief video to share with the Board that highlights the great work that they do.
Murfreesboro City Schools celebrated school counselors during National School Counselor Week. We have 17 school counselors within the district. The school counselor's role is to work with students, teachers, parents, and other outside agencies to best meet the individual needs of each student. There are three Cs of school counseling: counseling, collaboration, and communications.
I love the fact that I get to be a part of helping educators to meet the needs of their students and reach their greatest potential.
It is one of the only jobs in school which one has the privilege of getting to work with all the stakeholders. And we multitask very well. School counselors are like celebrities at their school.
In many ways, a school counselor is like the lifeblood of a school. We have so many different resources to help students in need, and many times, our counselor's kind of the hub, the person who makes sure our kids are getting to the right place to make sure socially and emotionally that they are where they need to be.
School counselors receive a master's degree and are licensed professionals in the state of Tennessee. School counselors are also the starting point and serve as a referral source so that students can access services from other providers.
School counselors are an integral part of our environment here at Bradley. School counselors provide the social and emotional support that our kids need in order to be successful learners and members of society. Our school counselors do an amazing job of providing things like social stories, family resources, you name it, that's the person you go to when you need support with a student.
Thank you, school counselors. We appreciate everything you do.
So as you can see from that very brief overview, to say that our school counselors play a critical role in the success of our schools is quite an understatement. And as a former principal, I can say, I don't know what I would have done without having my school counselor in the building every day. So we're so thankful for them. So as we end our Spotlight on Education, I know we have several school counselors in the audience, so if you're here, if you would please stand so we can formally thank you for the hard work that you do each day.
Before you move on from that, and I know you almost, you pretty much said what I want to say, but I think people don't realize now all that counselors do. I know that, and I know a lot, several of you here, and they're invaluable to everybody in the school. I cannot stress enough how many different hats they wear in a day's time, oh my god, maybe an hour's time. So, thank you so much, guys. I know that people don't get that you are really part of the backbone of the school, and I really appreciate what you do.
Ms. Moore?
Thank you. I just want to thank you all so much for what you do, and especially this year. I know it's an even heavier lift this year than it is normally, which is normally a heavy lift, and so I just want to give extra thanks to you all for what you've been doing this year. And just also add a personal note that when my kids were in city schools, I know the school counselor for one of my students in particular was just kind of a lifeline in school, and I will forever be grateful for that. So thank you all.
Thank you very much to all of you for what you do. All right, Dr. Duke, Best of MCS Recognition?
Yes, sir. This is one of my favorite parts of every board meeting, which is our Best of MCS Recognition, and I am just so pleased to honor an incredibly special employee for our Best of MCS Recognition tonight. I'm going to ask Ms. Amy Miller to come up, who is one of our Special Education Liaisons at Central Office. And I think it's important to know when we look at these Best of MCS Recognitions, these are nominations that come from throughout our district. So department heads, principals, just about anyone can nominate someone as a Best of MCS, and so we're so excited to recognize Ms. Miller today. Ms. Miller, as I said, is our Special Education Liaison at Central Office, and she works every day to support our schools as we work to offer the most effective services to our students with disabilities. I can promise you, every day, you will find her in a school, making sure that our principals and teachers are supported in the work that they need to do with our students. They're making sure our students have everything they need to be successful as well. And Ms. Miller consistently goes above and beyond and is known around our district for doing whatever it takes to get the job done. Ms. Miller was nominated for this recognition by a principal in our district who has had some transitions in her special education staff this year. Ms. Miller played a key role in making sure that those classrooms continue to remain successful. When the principal wrote to me, she said, "Amy has spent the entire day, many, many times, in our classrooms, subbing for the teacher, supporting the students and the teachers, and making sure they have what it needs to be successful." She has purchased supplies, written IEPs, attended meetings, called parents, supported the teacher and administration, and served as a go-between between the schools and Central Office. She has been here to support our new teacher and make sure they are acclimated to our district and the program. She has truly been an invaluable part of our program during this transition. So I want to thank you, Ms. Miller, for what you do. She has been with us for 26 years as a city school employee. And we are so thankful for her work. It is very bittersweet for me to also say she is retiring at the end of this school year.
Good for you, Emma.
And although we hate to see her go, I can assure you, her fingerprints can be found throughout this district. So Ms. Miller, thank you for the work that you do for our students and staff, because you truly do represent the Best of MCS. Thank you very much.
Wow. So I had all these words that I was going to say. I don't know if I can get them all out. I didn't expect it to be all of that. Where did it go? All of that. But it is, I am truly honored and humbled to be standing before you, to be considered the Best of MCS. And I know that this recognition, when an individual gets a recognition, I know it's because there are people behind her, beside her, supporting everything that I do and every move that I make. And I have an incredible supervisor of special ed that gives me unwavering support each and every day, and she's here tonight. And I have two incredible teammates that aren't here tonight, but they are also special ed liaisons for Murfreesboro City, Jennifer Clooney and Varancia Mumford. And together, it's every day we collaborate and we face the challenges that students with disabilities have, and we try to solve them. And I get to do what I love and what I'm passionate about. It's going to be hard to hang up that hat, but I have two grandchildren in Pennsylvania that are waiting for me, and they're toddlers, they're two and a half and three. So that's where I'm going to continue. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Duke, get an audit report?
Yes, sir. I am pleased to welcome Mr. Jobe from Jobe Hastings &amp; Associates at tonight's meeting. As you are aware, Jobe Hastings &amp; Associates completed our district audit for the 2020-2021 school year, and he is here tonight to present a report for the Board. You do have a copy of the audit at your desk tonight. Welcome.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Thank you for having me. We appreciate the opportunity to work with the school system, and just will say that Kim Williams and her staff are just excellent in cooperating and getting us what we needed, and we really appreciate her help in the audit. So, thank you for that. I've also got my colleague Molly Patricus back here, so if you guys ask any hard questions, I may turn around to her, so. This report is an 88-page report. I'm not going to go through everything, even though I've got an audience here to listen, but I'm just going to hit some basic highlights. And if you've got the copy there in front of you, on page one is our audit report. That's a few pages in, but, and basically, that says, it's three pages long to say that you had a clean opinion on the financial statements. So, nothing much of significance in there, that just says that we agree with your financial statements and issued a clean opinion on those. One thing, just to highlight a couple of things here, if you turn over to page 17, this is a summary of the system's balance sheet, financial statements. It's broken down into general purpose fund, the federal programs, the school nutrition or cafeteria fund, and then the other more insignificant fund. The main fund, of course, is the general purpose school fund. And you'll notice, if you look in that first column, we had assets, and this is as of June 30th, your fiscal year-end, had total assets of just over $32 million. Going on down, you'll see the fund balance. Fund balance is what your assets exceeded the liabilities, and what's available for next year's budget, so to speak. And at the end of the year, that was $11.8 million. And to put that in perspective a little bit, that represents about almost two months of expenditures of the whole system. So if revenues just suddenly stopped, we have enough in reserve to support the system for another two months. So that's a, that's a pretty strong statement about the financial health of the system. Over on page 21, the general purpose school fund is compared to the budget for the year. And if you see there, the final budget numbers for total expenditures were $92.9 million for the year, and the system ended up spending $87.6 million, so 5.3 under budget for the Like I said, I'm going to go pretty quickly here. Back on page 71, as you know, you get a lot of support from the state funds and from federal funds. There are schedules, starting on page 71, that show the programs and money that came from the state. There on page 71, you'll see that was over $49.7 million for the year. And then on the next page, it shows all the federal money and the different programs that were supported by those funds, and which department those came from. So that's, that's an interesting schedule, just to show what kind of support we're getting in federal and state funds. And then, the only, back on page 83, we're, as a part of your audit, we issue three reports, three opinions. The one in the beginning was on your financial statements that I spoke about. There's also, we're required to look at the internal controls of the system as it relates to your accounting records and putting together financial statements. We give an opinion on how those internal controls are working, and also compliance issues. You know, there's basic compliance with laws and payroll tax laws, or whatever it might be. That's also included in the second report. But we're also required to audit your federal funds. Each one of those programs has certain requirements, compliance requirements, and we're required to look at those and make sure that you're complying with those programs and that there's no issue as far as your federal programs. So all of those were clean opinions. And if you look on page 83, this is basically a summary of the audit. It does say that we had a clean opinion. There were a couple of findings, which is not unusual for a system of this size, and as you know, you were going through a transition in accounting, and there were two findings, and I'll say that those have already been corrected and remedied. So, so nothing alarming there. And I think that's, that's a quick summary, but be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
All right, we have any questions by members of the Board?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson?
A very thorough report. Thank you very much, and thank you for helping with how we go about internally looking at these things, and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Ballard?
Thank you for such a good report, but I want to know that there was nothing in there that alarmed you, or you saw that we need to take any additional steps to prepare for an audit again next year?
No, sir. There were those two findings, but like I said, they've already been corrected, and we've discussed those thoroughly, and I think those will be some improvements that will be made, already have been made. So, no, sir, nothing else that would... Thank you.
Ms. Barton?
Great job, Mr. Jobe.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Jobe, way too long. And I just want to say something to Ms. Williams. Kudos. I mean, you've done a lot since you've been here, and I just want you to know it hadn't gone unnoticed. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And I would say, two findings out of a massive thing is nothing compared to what could be, I guess. But that's great. And Ms. Williams, and you, and everybody that's involved, all of Ms. Williams' staff, and everybody involved with the financial part of this system, thank you very much. A job well done, again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe. All right, consent items. Members of the Board, you have seen, as I said earlier, the agenda, and I'd like to have a motion now to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, it's settled. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there are none. Thank you. Action items. Woo! Approval of tenured teachers.
It's been an exciting night, Mr. Chairman.
It is an exciting night for a lot of people.
Yes, sir, and it is with great pleasure that I present to the Board in their packet tonight a list of teachers who have met the requirements to obtain tenure and a teaching position in the Murfreesboro City School system. This is truly a noteworthy accomplishment for many reasons, including the fact that it indicates each of these teachers have demonstrated an overall performance level of above expectations or significantly above expectations during the last two recordable years. This recognition is a signal of their accomplishments in advancing the learning of our students. And so I'm going to ask the Board to, or recommend to the Board that they formally approve this list, and then I'm going to invite Mr. Ringstaff and Ms. Arnett to the podium after the approval to recognize these individuals. So we do recommend approval of the 44 individuals before you.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to accept the approval?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, have a second.
Second.
Ms. Goff, thank you. Any question or comment? And there are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you to those people who are on this list, too.
Yes.
Well, we are very excited to share with you our list of 44 teachers being recognized tonight for tenure. If you are here in the audience when I call your name, if you will come forward, Mr. Ringstaff will present you with your letter of tenure.
We want to get you on TV as well.
Okay, here we go. Courtney Baker. Krista Grimes. Bethany McClatchy. Bethany McClatchy. Laura Lee Foster. Taylor Whitsonman. Mary Beth Young. Mallory Clark. Oh, there's Rachel. Sorry about that. Mallory Clark. Okay. Laura Gavin. Jacqueline Keller. Xena Mosheen. Hillary Nunley. Krista Campbell. Kristen Bowers. Megan Maton. Abby Thomas. Whitney Dixon. Alma Salazar. Corey Brown. Laura Clemente. Tricia O'Connell. Terry Lynn Noblen. Alicia Pierce. Nell Simpson. Brittany Tate. Amanda Brown. Marion Evilseizer. Melissa Horn. Casey Landreth. Kristy Moore. Dana Pace. Amanda Turnbo, Amanda Turnbo. Gail Boyd. Shay Miga. Malia Rankins. Kimberly Cale. Emily Petty. Kirsten Tackett. And Jody McGinnis. Board and Dr. Duke, that concludes our list.
We want to thank you, teachers, for coming tonight. It's a great honor, and we appreciate your hard work that you do each day. And I think, Ms. Trail, are you gonna take a picture of them outside before you slip out, if you don't mind?
Thank you very much. Okay, and congrats to those of you that received your tenure certificate tonight. They don't have to leave.
They're taking a picture.
All right, Dr. Duke, I think you have the next item, approval of the zoning plan.
Yes, sir. We are seeking final approval of the proposed zoning changes to take effect for the 2022-2023 school year. This proposal will adjust the zoning at Overall Creek Elementary and Salem Elementary School to address capacity and overcrowding issues. The proposed plan would consist of the following changes. Approximately one hundred and ten students from Overall Creek will be rezoned to Northfield Elementary. Approximately one hundred and thirty-three students from Salem Elementary will be zoned to Case and Lane Academy. And approximately one hundred and twenty-one students from the Salem Elementary Zone will be rezoned to Black Fox. We are not recommending any changes to the zoned areas from what the board and the community have already seen. However, we are proposing changes to the grandfather policy based on feedback gathered during the three community meetings that we held. Under the original grandfathering proposal, in-city fifth and sixth graders were eligible to be grandfathered into the closed-zone school, with fourth graders also being eligible at Salem. Our revised proposal adds out-of-city fifth graders as eligible for the grandfathering as well. In addition to the zoning, we are also recommending that Black Fox, Case and Lane, Overall Creek, Salem, and Scales be listed as closed-zone schools for the 2022-2023 school year. We are happy to answer questions the board may have at this time, and we are recommending approval of the zoning adjustments.
All right, Ms. Settle, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question has to do with the change in the grandfathering that we'd agreed on or was presented to us. The new proposal adds out-of-city fifth graders as eligible for grandfathering. What's gonna be the net effect?
So, we're looking at the two schools that we are most concerned about, of course, being Overall and Salem. At Overall, it would allow four students to stay, and at Salem, it would be eight students to stay. And the reason behind that being it would prevent those students from going to a school in fourth grade, another school in fifth grade, and a third school in sixth grade.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Moore?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank all the parents who came to the meetings and sent us comments and emails. I went to all three town hall meetings, I read all the emails, I read all the comments that were submitted. The tone and the thoughtfulness was remarkable in those, and so I just want to thank everyone for that, and for being such good advocates for your kids. I had a lot of questions when I went through the comments, and I know I've spoken with Dr. Duke about a lot of these. A couple of them I'd kind of like to bring up while we're here in the public meeting. One is about, well, first of all, how many of our open-zone schools for next year are STEM designated? Because I know that was a concern that some parents raised.
Yes, so right now, we have five schools that are STEM designated. Overall, Case and Lane, Irma Segal, Hobgood, I'm sorry, Bradley, and Discovery. Thank you, I knew I had to list them all. Those are five. Northfield, and Hobgood, and Salem are going through the process, and we hope to have that by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. And the other, the other question I had was about, you know, we, obviously, the students are all being rezoned to a school where there will be transportation provided, but there are also these open-zone schools to go to, so we have some choices for people. But of course, one of our big choice schools is Discovery School, which is already, their process has already started, and I think kind of closed at this point, but for a waiting list. And I, I wanted to know if there's any accommodation we can make, if any of the, the families being rezoned would want to try to test for Discovery School since that period has already closed.
Yes, so our letters did go out for Discovery School. You are correct, that process did close. But what we can do, if there's a parent who's being transferred out of the rezoned area that would like to test in, then we can go through that testing process with them as a possibility, and then put them on a waiting list for sure. Even though that has to, even though that time period has closed, that is something, if the board wanted to go through with, we could definitely add, make that happen.
Would we need to add that to whatever we're approving tonight, or is it a separate?
We would probably want to have us include that in the motion, to include that we would allow parents who are being relocated out of their current school to be able to test to be put on the waiting list. We would, we would want to make sure we put that in the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Richardson?
Thank you. The only changes that have been made were due to feedback that we heard from parents. Is that right?
Yes, sir, that's where the specific, the specific change regarding allowing the out-of-city fifth graders to remain was specific feedback we had from parents, and we really dug into those numbers and looked at the impact it would have on the overall school.
Very well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Settle?
I did want to say, just one, one statement, I guess, that, and, and all, being on school board, there's a couple of things that cause people to get kind of, you know, excited, and one of them is rezoning. And unfortunately, rezoning has to happen. I think that the encouraging thing is that all of the schools in our system are excellent schools. We have excellent administrators in all of our schools, we have excellent teachers in all of our schools. And the impact that the rezoning is gonna make, we hope it's gonna be minimal as far as being difficult for families, and I understand that. And I've gotten all the emails, too, and they're, they're really heart-wrenching, and, you know, they tug at your heartstrings and all of those types of things, but I do want our parents to know that we've, we've done the least harm that we could, and still ensuring that all of our schools operate far below the state minimum requirement for parent-to-teacher, student-to-teacher ratio. So we're doing our, our job there, so I apologize, but please know that we've taken all of your concerns into consideration and had to make the, the best judgment that we thought for the majority of students, and I think we've done that. And I want to say kudos to April, and to Dr. Duke as well, because they've worked really tirelessly to make this as painless a process as possible, and as far as rezoning. And, and I'll be real honest, because I was here when we opened the one school, and some of this is cleanup. I'll just be real frank, some of this is cleanup that should never have happened. And we're just having to clean up some stuff, so I apologize. But all our schools are great. If your, if your child lands at any one of our schools, they will do nothing but excel. That's been proven over and over again, and I'm done.
And I would agree with you. Even though we have some that are newer buildings and facilities, as the old saying goes, you can't judge a book by looking at the cover. And everything on the inside is wonderful, I think, every place I've visited, anyway. All right, Ms. Goff?
Under this new proposal, how many students were going to be allowed to stay? How many, is it under ten?
With the, with the revised?
Yes.
With allowing the grandfathering. That would allow, when we looked at it, there currently impact four students at Overall Creek. That would meet that criteria, and then eight at Salem.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the plan with the added language that Ms. Moore questioned earlier. I'll defer to counsel as to whether or not that was an appropriate motion or not.
Yes, I think it's appropriate. There's no other motion on the floor at this time, I don't believe.
Right, do we have a second to Ms. Richardson's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Settle. Now, any more discussion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And it is a majority unanimous decision to adopt the current minimal zoning plan. And like Ms. Settle said, it's not an easy thing, but when you grow as fast as Murfreesboro and Rutherford County is growing, you have to, you have to keep, try to keep ahead, if at all possible. All right, approval of Board Policy 5104, equal opportunity employment.
Yes, sir. We're recommending, Policy 504 is our district's equal opportunity employment policy, and it has been updated to ensure it specifies all protected classes, and we are recommending approval of the policy as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have any question or discussion?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Settle?
Sorry, was this a result of TSBA or somebody, or was this just something we reviewed through and decided we needed to change?
No, it was just a result of our annual policy review, to ensure that our policy is in line with all protected classes under federal law.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 5.117, tenure and non-tenure.
Yes, sir. Policy 5.117 governs tenure of certified employees. Murfreesboro City School Board's current version included language explaining a change in the tenure law that include, that occurred eleven years ago. We are recommending the amendment which repeals the current version and replaces it with a clearer, more concise TSBA model policy. There has been no actual change to the tenure law itself, just to clarify on that on the policy, and we are recommending approval.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question or comment, discussion? If not, all in favor of Policy 5.117, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy is 5.302, sick leave and bereavement leave.
Yes, sir. We are recommending the addition of bereavement leave to our current sick leave policy. Currently, our bereavement leave is outlined in an administrative directive, and this change will put bereavement leave in line with our other types of leave, which is formally adopted on by the board and then goes through the review annually. So we are recommending the policy to include bereavement as part of our sick leave policy.
Okay. Have a motion to accept the policy 5.302.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Any question or comment?
I have a question.
All right, sir.
The bereavement leave is, is on a per-case basis, is that right? So it's just like, we get so many sick days, but on bereavement, you get three per occurrence. Is that correct?
Yes.
Am I reading it right?
For each immediate family member death, you get...
And they're listed?
Yes, it's listed in the policy who qualifies as an immediate family member.
And there's no additional time for, and I'm just reading through to familiarize myself, there's no additional time for travel if, say, there's an out-of-state?
The policy does state they can request an additional four if needed, but those additional four would come from their sick leave. So they get the additional three for bereavement, and then could request up to four more.
Up to four more, where they, the four, the four additional would come out of their sick?
That is the way the policy is written, yes, sir.
Mr. Ballard?
So, that brings up a question, David, thank you. The, the bereavement, is that additive to the, to the sick leave? In other words, if, if someone has three days of sick leave in the bank, and they have a death in the family that's gonna require additional days, is that additive to that?
It's different.
Yeah.
Mr. Ringstaff?
It's different. They fill out the paperwork, they call us, let us know, and then we will add bereavement leave to their Skyward account, and they can take up to three days for the immediate family. If they wish to take more time, then they would take the sick leave.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Settle?
One more question. This is a fiscal question. Do we know kind of, cost-wise, what this is gonna be, Kim? How this is gonna affect?
You know who's gonna pass away.
Well, I know, well, they've got to estimate it.
We've been practicing this for several years.
We've already done, it's already in place?
Yes, sir.
So we're just putting policy behind it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well then, I was asking for Wes. Wes is my, 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 my finance hawk. He's usually asked that question. So since he missed it, I thought I would ask it for him. But we've been doing this anyway, we're just...
Yes, sir.
Putting the law, or our policy behind it so that it stands more firmly.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Board of Policy 5.304?
Yes, sir. We recommend, this is the policy that governs our practices when a certified educator requests to go on a long-term leave of absence. So as a reminder, when long-term leaves are granted, we fill that position with an interim teacher, if that position is vacated for less than twelve months. If it's longer than twelve months, we actually place an, a non-interim position in that place, and the educator, when they return from leave, are put in a comparable position. The first adjustment specifies that two years of continuous service in MCS is required before a long-term leave may be granted, except when that leave is required under state or federal law. The second adjustment specifies that the long-term leaves of absences cannot be granted in two consecutive years, except in the case where that's required under state or federal law. And we are recommending approval of the policy as presented.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I saw move.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 5.307, physical assault.
Yes, sir. We have been, we have updated this policy to change the word teacher to employee to clarify that the policy applies to all MCS employees, and we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in, any question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 5.701, substitute teachers.
Yes, sir. We have updated this policy to mirror the State Board of Education rule. It specifies that once a teacher's accumulated leave is exhausted, the substitute teacher must be licensed and endorsed for the assignment they are working in, and they must be paid according to our salary schedule. We are recommending approval of the policy as presented.
All right, we have a motion to accept Policy 5.701 on substitute teachers.
I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Question, what, what, what is the change?
So the change, it's, Claire, if you look here at the bottom, what we're clarifying So, the change, it's, if you look here at the bottom, what we're clarifying is, previously, it said when substituting the teacher without sick leave, they should be certified. We changed the language to make sure it matched the State Board rule.
Okay. All right. Ms. Settles?
I have a question. This may have been answered before, and there may be another policy. What do we do if that substitute that's currently in that position is not, does not meet the qualifications, and we have to bring in another substitute? Is that right?
That is correct. I would, I will say, and I'll defer to Mr. Ringstaff on this as well. Usually, when you're looking at a leave of more than 20 consecutive days, that falls into that long-term leave policy. So, very seldom is that a case that is taken by surprise. So, we usually know that the sub is going to be out for an extended leave, and therefore, we, as the building principals and with HR, they work together to make sure they find the right sub who meets those qualifications. If we have a sub in there, and it is, turns into a long-term leave, and it is more than 20 days, at that point, we would have to make the shift to make sure we have a certified teacher in that position.
So, like, in other words, they go out sick, and it, I'm just going to be out for a couple of days, and then it turns into, oh, no, see you next year, then we've got, okay. That's, that was my question.
We have a motion and a second on Policy 5.701, substitute teachers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, budget transfers?
That's a lot of policies.
Yes, sir. Our first budget transfer is the FY22 school nutrition adjustment we're asking to make. We're requesting approval to transfer funds within the school nutrition line items. This amendment will cover the cost of unemployment, an increase in non-food supplies, office supplies, and in-service and staff development, the additional cost of utensils, paper products, and toners in the kitchen, and the increase in staff development will allow our nutrition staff to attend the Farm-to-School and Tennessee School Nutrition Conference. All of these increases, I'm sorry, all of these adjustments are covered from savings and other categories. There are no new revenues, and there's no change to fund balance, and we're recommending approval of the amendment.
All right. We have a motion to approve the fund budget transfer in school nutrition.
So moved.
Ms. Settles, have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Richardson, now, Mr. Ballard?
Could you explain the unemployment? Does that mean you're rehiring for, or what is, or is that unemployment compensation?
Yes, that's unemployment that we are required to pay.
So, that's our fee for unemployment compensation?
Yes.
We pay the state. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Settles?
I have a question, and it's not necessarily on this, and I don't see Sandy here, but I did...
She's here.
I don't know why I would think she wouldn't be here. My question has to do with our supply chain issues. It doesn't necessarily have to do with this, but since we're talking about nutrition, and I'm generally hungry, I just wanted to ask about our supply chain. Has that loosened any? Are we still tight? Do I need to come in and do any, I'm willing to do whatever I can, including eating all the extra vegetables from the garden?
No, at this time, it has not loosened at all. And the last thing, I attended a school nutrition industry conference, and they're saying it's probably going to be 23, 24 before we even see anything loosening up. Yeah. We have a lot more of our vendors who are actually walking away from school nutrition due to the fact, of course, there's no money in school nutrition. They just can't continue business that way.
Wow. That's kind of a bleak outlook. Well, I appreciate your hard work on making sure our kids get fed nonetheless. So, certainly, kudos to you and your staff, because this is, as they say, these are the times that try men's souls, and this has been difficult. And I know how it can be, especially in school nutrition, from a food services standpoint, you want these kids to get fed and fed well, and we already take a big rapping about school lunches. Every week, you see some horrible picture. So, thank you for the hard work that you do.
Ms. Moore?
I think, maybe in a related question to Mr. Settles, I noticed that some of the decrease that we're shifting around comes from the food line, and I wondered why that was, we were able to decrease that, given issues with supply chains and...
Well, we had added extra money into there, quite a bit of extra money, and I'm able to utilize our commodity dollars that come from the federal government. So, I'm shifting items around. As far as commodity, you're pretty much guaranteed you're going to get those items. So, what we call our center of the plate, which is the entree, I'm concentrating on that with a commodity dollar so that we can make sure I'm meeting all the requirements through the federal government.
Yeah, and make sure that it will show up, that we have a surplus.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It may not be on time, but they'll get here.
Any other questions? Now, we have a motion, excuse me, to approve the student nutrition fund budget, yeah, the transfer?
Say that again. I said, say that again, real fast.
We have a motion to approve the student nutrition fund budget transfer.
I'll make a motion. We accept it.
Thank you, Ms. Goff.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. General purpose fund budget transfer?
Yes, sir. We are requesting approval to transfer funds within our general purpose school operating budget. This amendment will cover increases in instructional materials and supplies, hybrid retirement, and other benefits. The fringe benefit, as a reminder, is offered to all employees who choose to opt out of the state medical insurance plan. And I want to stop there just for a second to make sure, just to provide some clarity on that, because I know with the retirement and having two plans, so just so the Board has all the information, as a reminder, there is a hybrid and a legacy retirement plan, and you may see more of these budget amendments come through. These represent mandatory contributions that are from the state for certified teacher retirement. Anyone who was hired prior to July of 2014 is on the legacy plan, while those who are hired after July of 2014 are on the hybrid plan. The main difference between these two plans is that those on the legacy plan have their entire required contribution made to TCRS. Those on the hybrid plan, it's just that, it's a hybrid. They contribute their required portions to both TCRS as well as the state's 401K. Again, these are driven by state law, so the state is what sets this. The reason we may have to make adjustments between the hybrid and the legacy line item is because when we complete the budget, we're not always finished hiring. And so, if we hire after the budget's completed, and we hire someone on a legacy plan or a hybrid plan, it may cause us to make shifts accordingly as needed. So, you'll see, in this budget amendment, it purely shifted the amount from the legacy to the hybrid or vice versa. So, I wanted to take a minute. That is the first part of that budget amendment. The second part is we are requesting a $30,000 transfer in the operation of plant category to purchase a replacement cargo van with shelving for our district courier to use. This is coming from savings that we have in the contracted janitorial services line item. Our current courier van is in need of replacement. We had originally intended to include this in our budget for next fiscal year. However, the need is more immediate than we had originally expected. There are no total increases in total revenues or expenditures, and no changes to fund balance, and we are recommending approval of these budget amendments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move for the approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, thank you. Reports and information? Summer school update?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
On this February 22nd, 2022, it's a great night to talk about summer school. Summer school plans are well underway. I know you have in your packet what we're currently doing. Our summer school this year will take place June 6th through June 30th. We have sent out an interest Google form for our teachers, and I can say that we have over 100 teachers that are interested in teaching summer school already. So, we're very excited about that. It will be held at four of our schools, Hopgood, John Pittard, Kason Lane, and Northfield, and it will serve our current K through sixth grade students. The schedule will look the same as it did last year, 7:30 to 12:30 for our students. We will be providing bus transportation, and they will receive breakfast and lunch each day as well. And we will be using our adopted curriculum, supplementing a little bit for intervention, but we're very excited about that, and we will be providing training for our summer school teachers as well. So, just wanted to give you a quick update as to where we are with that, but it looks like summer school is off to being a great success, just like it was last year. So...
Thank you. Any question? Ms. Moore?
I notice it says that invitations are part of this, so is it open to any student? Or do invitations come with priority, and then we open it? How does that work?
Yes. We are going to send invitations this year. We're going to look at some benchmark data, teacher input, and send invitations first, and then we're actually going to start those invitations at parent-teacher conferences. It'll be our first go-around. And then, if we do have any other open slots, we will open it up as well. You know, with, if we say we have 100 teachers, we know that we can currently serve 1,200 students, so we want to make sure that we serve all 1,200 students as we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Goff?
How is the teacher pay looking for summer school? Is it going to be like it was last summer?
Yes, ma'am. It's exactly the same. So, it's $200 a day. We will have an administrator in each building with two EAs and an office personnel person as well.
All right. Thank you, ma'am, very much. Any other question? Mr. Ballard?
Sherri?
Yes, sir.
What did we have as far as enrollment as we ended last summer, and what do you expect that to do, increase or decrease?
So, last year, when we opened it up to everyone, we started off with about 1,600. By the time we ended mid-July, we probably had around 600. That, July 4th, after that time, that our attendance really dwindled. I expect this year that if the number of teachers that we have, as long as we, you know, have the number of teachers, that we should be able to serve, you know, 12 students per class, times 100, give us 1,200 right now. It could be more.
Hope so.
Yeah, I do, too. I think it'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Duke.
Yeah, just two quick clarifying things I want to bring up there. The reason with that decrease we saw after July 4th was one of the main reasons we decided to put the waiver into the state to focus on those four weeks in June, because we did have such a huge drop-off after the July 4th holiday. And then, also regarding the invitations, that actually is a state requirement. So, we have to prioritize students as part of the state requirement to use those funds for this program. And Ms. Arnett's team, as always, has done a great job helping to identify who those most at-risk students are.
And we'll be working closely with schools on that and principals, too, so that everybody has a voice in that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good report. Looking for some good results, and I'm sure we're going to have it. Personnel report?
Yes, you have your personnel report in front of you tonight, and Mr. Ringstaff is available should anyone have any questions regarding that.
Any question from Mr. Ringstaff on the personnel report? All right, if not, okay. Enrollment report?
And I am once again pinching for Mr. Marlin, who could not be here tonight. So, I will just draw your attention to, we have ended Period 5, which ended at the beginning of February, and we are currently at 9,430 students total in the district. So, that's up from where we ended last year, about 430 students. So, we ended right at 9,000 last year. So, I want to draw your attention to that. If you look at the second page, I'm sorry, the second attachment, which is the PTR, you can see where we are maintaining our PTRs. And I'll also point out that in your zoning packet, we did update the projections from what you saw at the original meeting, and that is based off the growth we've seen, because we continue to see growth, as you can see on this page, at overall Creek, at Salem, and at Scale. So, we have adjusted the most current projections for zoning based off of this report. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have on enrollment.
Any questions on enrollment report? I see none. All right, revenue and expenditure report for January. Ms. Williams? While you're coming up, can I ask you a question about the audit report that I forgot? What does RSI stand for?
Required supplemental information.
Thank you. I noticed that in the report, and I didn't know what it meant.
Yes. Sometimes we get bogged down in the numbers, but there's so much information in the narrative as well. So, yeah. I would like to say, thank you for your kind words earlier about the audit. And Beth Prater is also here, and I'd like to turn the spotlight on her for just a second, and Kim Fisher as well, and just say that we received a very thorough audit from Molly Petracas, Drew Nickerson, and Joe Hastings. It really does take a team effort and a village, and Beth Prater, Becky Sally, Dina Thomas, and Rachel Bloom in payroll, all, Sandy, we were all in it together.
You do have a great team.
We really do.
Having known several of those ladies for quite a while.
They're a lot better than county.
Well, had I put the pieces, connected the dots, I'd think I may have worn a tutu today. Would have scared everyone. Well, I am here to offer some happy news on this February 22nd. And if you will, please look at the comparison total, it's that first page of three pages, and the total income expenses and the difference between the two, that $4.8 million, we are on the plus side.
All right.
And I would say that is, a huge part of that is the very robust collections of county property taxes. We received over $6.8 million in the month of January for the December collections. So, we still have another six months of property tax collections. Now, they're not all going to be that high, but that $6.8 million represents a 5% increase over this time last year. In addition to that, our sales tax, again, I'm going to use the word robust, it's very robust, and we, it's about a 17% increase over January last year. And I projected out sales tax, and this is, this is just a projection, we'll evaluate this as the dollars continue to come in, but there's a very good chance we'll be about, I'm going to bring it down a couple of points, about 17% over budget on our local option sales tax. So, that is a huge increase in our sales tax dollars. We'll continue to, when I say we, Beth and I will continue to look at those local dollars, and if we need to come before you with a budget amendment to properly account for those local revenues, we will do that at closer to year-end. We balance the local revenues with the state's requirement to maintain local effort. That's a little bit of a different conversation, I just want to put that out there, maintenance of local effort. So, our BEP, we did get just a slight increase in our BEP state dollars, and they're giving us a little bit of extra money due to the increase in the state's medical insurance. So, we're going to start seeing that for the rest of the year. The other big revenue generator really is the operating transfer that we get from the city of Murfreesboro. That's about $4.6 million a month. So, on the expenditure side, there are two percentages I'd like to bring to your attention. If you would flip over to the year-to-date revenue comparison and drop all the way down to the bottom in the far-right corner, and you'll see 56.3%. That's our total collections of revenue. And then, we're going to flip to the next page, our total expenditures, and in the same box in the corner in the bottom, we had 49.49% total expenditures, which means we're on the, we're collecting more money than we're spending as of about 50% through the budget. So, and I say 50% through the budget, I know we're in January, but one of our big labor costs, and worth every penny, are teachers. And our teacher salaries are paid 12 months from August through July. So, that's our 50% cutoff point right now. And that's kind of a summary of a lot of information, and I just will say that we're also compiling some graphs and tables and schedules as we prepare for our budget meetings that I think will further, just give you some illustrations of... that I think will further, just give you some illustrations of, of all of these numbers. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any question? Mr. Ballard?
The good news is great to hear, that we're, you know, we're ahead of the curve on this. Now, does, remind me again, does this carry over the 17% or the other percentage of the, where we're $4 million ahead right now? When we end up the fiscal year and we're still $4 million ahead, does that carry over to the next fiscal year?
It does. It rolls over into that category of that unassigned fund balance that this past audit year, we increased. I know Mr., Mr. Joe mentioned we had 11.8 million in
Yes.
total fund balance. That was a little over $2 million increase from last year. So that $2 million rolled into fund balance. And that gives us unrestricted, we can budget that, within state guidelines, we can budget that money for unrestricted or general purposes in our operating fund.
That's great.
Mr. Suddles?
I don't
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we finished.
I said, that's great.
But Suddles?
It, it's not a question, it's a, it's a comment, and, and not necessarily to you, Kim, you do such a wonderful job, but to everybody out there listening, shop local, it matters. It really matters. It really matters, and that 17% increase, that ain't nothing to sneeze at. Some good, that's a good increase. So really and truly, shop local, it definitely pays.
It does. Thank you for that.
All right, any other question? Ms. Goff?
I was gonna ask you, I don't know, it might be a Ralph question, but you probably know it since you do the budget, but are we still one of the leading districts with teacher, beginning teacher pay at 40, what are we, 43,000 beginning teacher?
Do you remember?
Sorry, Ralph.
We, we've done a weight survey, I think nine school districts, and only one other school district is starting their teachers more than we are. I don't want to say that out loud too much.
No, not at all. Okay, so our tenured teachers that were here tonight, they've got five years now under their belt with their district. So is it kind of based on their degrees, what they're getting paid? I know we took that leveling out, the pays, they...
We pay on years' experience and degrees.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am, very much. Good report. Dr. Duke, directors update?
Yes, sir. Just a couple things to update the board on. One, I'm going to piggyback what Mr. Richardson mentioned before the meeting started, which is we are expecting the governor to release his draft legislation this Thursday on the new school funding model. This is something, obviously, we're gonna be watching very closely, as we expect it will have huge impacts on how we operate as a school system, when you're talking about a total reworking of how schools are funded. I've said before, the main question I have is, is this good for Murfreesboro City? And hopefully, after Thursday, we will have some more information on the impact that it's gonna have for us directly as a district. So I will keep the board updated on that.
Could I ask a quick question? Do we know if this, when this would take place, or is that part of the announcement, when it would begin?
Our, our understanding is that it will not take place until 2023, '24. So there will be a year, we'll go into next year into the same funding model, and then if, of course, the General Assembly passes the proposed legislation, it would go into effect the next year.
Okay, thank you.
And as we all know, just because it's proposed doesn't mean it's gonna be passed.
That is correct.
That's true.
Which is a good question for our March 3rd meeting with our legislators, and please don't forget that, 5:30 until 7:00 at our central office. And we'll be giving you more information about that in the next day or two. I'm sorry.
I don't know if I should add that now, or when you're finished, you're still giving... I attended a legislative and legal conference this past week in Nashville, two days, and I have placed on everybody's desk the proposed bills that TSBA is asking us to support, and the ones that they want us to oppose and to contact their legislators. So there's some interesting bills that's on the table, and I hope we can look over them before we have our March 3rd meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because it's a very nice, concise list.
We, we got, did we get that in an email from TSBA?
I did. I guess everybody did.
I may not have seen it.
No, didn't? Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
No problem. I want to also reiterate what Ms. Trail mentioned at the beginning, which is that our STEM in the city on March 10th at the Lane Agri Park Center. Again, Ms. Trail will send out more information about that. We're really excited about this. This is the first time we've done it. This really came from the schools and their desire to say, let's not just show our parents what we're doing with STEM, let's show our city what we're doing with it. So we're excited to have multiple schools at the Agri Park Center displaying that information. So I encourage everyone to come to that. Finally, I know the board has already received this information, but I want to publicly say how excited we are that MCS was recognized by the state as one of 68 best-for-all districts in Tennessee. This recognition was given to highlight the fact that we are significantly investing our federal dollars to drive student achievement through services, resources, and supports that will help students achieve academically. So we are excited to be recognized by the state for this commitment of using our funds and investing these relief dollars back into our students. So kudos to our entire staff, but I wanted to publicly say how excited we are to receive that recognition. And, Mr. Chairman, those are all of my updates for tonight.
All right. Ms. Kim, we want to thank you for being here tonight in Lisa's absence as she became a grandmother, was it yesterday or the day before?
Sunday.
Sunday, okay. And everybody's doing well, I think. I got some pictures today.
Butch, I was gonna do a shout-out to John Pittard. I don't know if any of you saw that on Channel 5 News, I think, this week? Was it the Predators thing that we recognized them for maybe a year ago, and it's just now come to fruition, the grant that they got for their library or reading? So that was, they were featured this week on the news. So that was good.
Anything else come before our board tonight? If not, we have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. All in favor? Good night.
Bye.
Bye-bye.